The United States of America and two sovereign states which stand one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Okay, for tonight's meeting, there were two regular members who were unable to attend, and so the two alternates, Phyllis Capone and Paul Lee, will be full-voting members for the entire meeting. For those that are new to the procedures here, we divide the meeting into two sections. During the first section, we take each of the applications in order and have a public hearing. During the -- for the public hearing, we'll ask each applicant to come forward. You have to be sworn in. All testimony before the ZBA has to be sworn testimony. At that point, we'll ask you to give a very brief description of what your application is about, and then members of the board will have an opportunity to ask questions. When that's finished, the board -- the floor will be open to the public for anyone who wishes to address that particular application, but that application only. When we've heard from everyone who wishes to testify, we will close the public hearing and move on to the next item on the agenda. By the way, if you would like a copy of the agenda, they're available in that little tray next to Ms. Anderson's desk. Ms. Anderson is our legal counsel. Once the public hearings are finished, we'll go back to the top of the agenda for the deliberation phase, and during that part of the meeting, there's no further public input. Though the meeting is open, you're welcome to stay and listen to the deliberations. After discussing each of the items, we'll vote on it and then move on to the next one. If you aren't able to stay to listen to the deliberations, you can call the zoning department in the morning and get the results of our deliberations. Item number one.
Chairman?
Yes.
I will be recusing myself on item number one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Rutberg-Breslow Personal Injury Law at 33 -- yeah, 3344 Route 9 North, to get the proper address. Is there anyone here to address this? We have received considerable input. I would like to move forward with this tonight, rather than adjourning it again, but I don't know. Do you have any input on this?
No further, no.
So, I mean, what is the sense of the board?
Let's go with it.
Act on this?
Okay.
In that case, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay, so...
One recusal.
One recusal. I'm sorry, Paul. I do that every single time. Okay. Item two. 51 Fairview Corporation at 5153 Fairview Avenue. Is there anyone here representing this application? Again, this is something that's now been adjourned two or three times.
Mr. Chairman, it was also adjourned tonight at the request of the applicant, and that
was a two-month adjournment. We've received no communication from them.
It's on since June.
Can we dismiss?
Yeah, but the last one was a written request to -- from, I think, from September to tonight. Staff has had no communication whatsoever with the applicant.
Can we dismiss it?
I'd move to close the record and vote after deliberations.
Do -- should -- let's see. We're in an open public -- so we have to close the public hearing.
Close the public. Well, you may want to open and ask, since you did adjourn it to tonight, a date certain, to ask if there's anybody who wishes to speak to it, and then move to close if not.
Okay. With -- at least for my part, my choice would be to just dismiss this without prejudice if they want to come back.
That's actually staff's recommendation.
Okay. So, before we close the public hearing, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address -- it's a use variance for 5153 Fairview Avenue. They're asking for a variance to allow a pizzeria in a residential neighborhood. Okay, hearing none? There's a motion on the table to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And no recusals? Okay. Item number three. Young Home and Property LLC at 60 Cedar Street. Is there anyone here representing?
They wrote a letter, Chairman, and asked for an adjournment.
They did. They asked for an adjournment. They did. Okay.
It's January 12th.
Okay, so I move that item number three be adjourned to our meeting on January...
20th.
12th.
12th.
Oh, 12th.
Second.
Okay. All right. Motion to adjourn item number three is made in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And item number four, I understand there's also a request for an adjournment?
Mm-hmm. For the 12th, this one.
To January 12th?
Next year.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm -- I move item number four be adjourned to January 12th.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay. We're on a roll here.
Second or 12th.
Item number five. Paul and Hazel Dorn, 152 Bauer Road. Yes, so step forward, please. Have a seat. Good evening. If you both just -- and you're going to have to speak in -- I think there's a microphone for each of you. Just pull that down there. Okay. And if you'd each just state your name for the record.
Paul Dorn.
And Hazel Dorn.
Paul Dorn and Hazel Dorn. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, and so briefly, the reason that you're here.
I'm looking for a variance for a shed that we have behind the house. During the process of getting a lot line adjustment, I found out the shed was off of my property, and the variance that -- the lot line adjustment should cover that, and then the variance will cover the 10-foot clearance I have to have on the backside of the...
Okay. And that -- the shed is there now, and it has been for some time?
Quite a while, yeah.
Quite a while, okay. All right. So, Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no question.
No questions.
All right. Okay, and I cleared mine up. Paul?
Nope, no question.
Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Phyllis?
No, no questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 152 Bauer Road? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Item number six. Julie and Warren Arbiter?
Please first.
35 Tree Top Lane. Yes, sir.
Why?
Ma'am and ma'am.
I didn't say it. I didn't. 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 I didn't.
Okay. If you'd each just state your names. Warren Arbiter?
Julie Arbiter. Mr. and Mrs. Arbiter, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes, I do.
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and your variance concerns what?
We're -- we would like to erect a shed, what we consider the backyard. Unfortunately, the town considers our entire yard a front yard. So that's where our problem lies. You know, we -- if you look aesthetically at the front of the house, it's clear that's the front. There's the garage, the front door, and if you move around toward the back, where we would like to erect the shed, that's what we would think is the backyard, but we found out it's not the backyard, it's also the front yard, because I think we border other roads throughout the whole property.
Yeah, I think in front -- you have three front yards.
Yes, we have three front yards. Yeah. That's a lovely thing to have. Except for tonight.
I don't know whether that's good news or bad news, but that's what you -- where you are.
Yep.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no question.
All right.
No questions.
And I -- none. Paul?
No.
Carmen?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No, I spoke with the family yesterday.
Okay, all right. Anyone from the audience wishes to address the application at 35 Tree Top Lane?
Okay.
Okay, if not, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Item number seven. Ronald Hobbler, 43 Wildwood Drive. Good evening, sir.
Good evening.
Okay, just state your name, please.
Sir, Ronald Hobbler.
Mr. Hobbler, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, and you're seeking what?
Seeking from the board approval for an area variance, front yard on a shed that's in place at this time.
Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
Well, it's well-hidden, because we had to search for it.
The house or the shed?
The shed. The house, we thought. The house was easy.
Oh, good, I'm glad to hear it, because they wrote -- those roads get a little intertwined.
I have no question.
All right.
No questions.
The shed is an existing shed?
Yes, sir.
And it appears that it's been there for a while?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and sort of just generally, why is it located there, rather, say, behind the house?
The area behind the house, especially after the storm of 2000, when the trees came there, had a very limited usable area. The ground in the back also is not flat. That the area on that street can be up and down in terms of altitude, the way it moves. Consequently, there was not an easy place to even have access to that in the backyard, or it would take up a very large area with small amount of flat space was available. With a paved parking area to the side of the house, it's kind of like off to the side, it was a very convenient place, just to extend out a little bit for the shed.
Okay, fine, good. Paul?
I'm sorry, are you replacing the shed? Are you...
No, it's in place, sir.
It's there. You're not -- it's just for the shed that's there. You're asking for a variance for the shed that's there, you're not building a new one?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, I -- yes, that's right.
Okay.
Yes, I hope I didn't confuse you with a newer shed. I did title on the map a newer one, because there was one when we bought the house many years ago.
Oh, okay.
In the back.
And is it about 12 or 14 feet from the lot line?
I'm sorry, sir?
Is it about 12 or 14 feet from the lot line?
Yes, correct. At minimum, at minimum. I took a young -- actually, my son-in-law out as well, and he felt that was a minimal estimate, although I didn't measure it with a -- with one of the meters.
All right, that's all I have.
Okay. Carmen?
No questions.
Okay. Phyllis?
I have no questions.
Okay.
Nice to meet you.
Anyone from the audience wish to address the application at 43 Wildwood Drive? Hearing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Number eight. Robert Raish, 1 Victor Lane.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's Raymond.
Raymond, Raymond, excuse me, I wrote the wrong thing down on my notes here. Okay, my apologies. Okay, so I guess, state your correct name.
Raymond Raish.
Okay.
Mr. Raish, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, you want to describe briefly what you've got planned?
Yes, I'm on a corner lot, so I have two front yards, not three, but two. So I want to put an addition on to my house, three-car garage, build out the current garage, so it will be to the side that's facing Victor Lane, and if you look at the house, that's a side yard at my property. But I'll be within the 30 feet. Actually, my house is 28.2. I've had an architect come, measured, and all that, so I'm a pre-existing, non-conforming use as it is. So for me to do any addition, I'd have to come to this board. So I've -- I want to put a three-car garage, and I'll be within the 30 feet.
Okay. Christine?
No questions.
Betty?
I have no question.
All right.
No questions.
I have a couple. One, I was a little puzzled. It appears that there's a fair distance between your property line and the actual edge of the pavement.
Yeah, there -- my actual property line is in quite a bit. I don't know why, but my development, the town's dedicated area for the road is quite wide. So, in reality, where the new foundation's going to be, I'll be 30 feet away from the curb cut, what the building is.
Okay.
At one point, my property kind of pies in, it tethers in, so the street goes straight, but my property line actually keeps coming in, so...
So there is a fair amount of space there?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I actually have this render...
I won't ask you whether the town comes and mows it, because I think I know the answer.
No, no, I maintain it for the town without charge.
Yeah. Okay. My second question is, it appears in the drawing that you submitted that there will be a three-car garage, and then it looks, what, living space above it?
Yes, I'm going to put in a master bathroom, a master bedroom and bathroom.
Okay, and the existing garage converted into something else?
It's going to be built out to a family, a family room. I mean, my father lives up the street. I grew up in this neighborhood. This house was my grandfather's. And my father's 81. He's got Lou Gehrig's disease for the last eight years, and for whatever time, I want him to be with me, and that's, you know, it's -- but it's not going to be a bedroom, it's not going to be a mother-daughter suite, it's just a livable area.
Yeah, okay. The -- you'll have to put in a new driveway for the new garage.
Oh, yeah, I've spoken to the highway department. They're actually thrilled that the driveway will be further away from the corner.
Okay, and the driveway that exists now, what will be taken out?
Yeah, I've talked to my wife, will probably, you know, grass it and garden it, and it'll be nice.
It'll be very nice, yeah. Paul?
No, those are good questions.
Oh. Nothing. Carmen?
Yes, I was going to ask what you were going to do with the existing garages, and it's converted into living space.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Phyllis?
No question.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address 1 Victor Lane? Okay, seeing no one, a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item number nine. Richard Prieto.
Aye.
And the applicant has asked that this be adjourned to our January meeting?
January 12th.
January 12th, so I move that item number nine be adjourned to January 12th.
Second.
All in favor?
I just have one question, Mr. Chairman. Is this the one where we had some confusion about the actual...
Yes, and...
Is he going to re...
The applicant is aware of it, and the whole idea is to get that straightened out.
Very well.
And it's one of these cases where he's looking to build a new garage, but I don't believe that the construction will happen until spring, so it really doesn't make much difference. So taking a month, getting the numbers right is fine. Item number 10.
So we have to vote, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. On the motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay. Item number 10. Master Kwan, 766 Vassar Road.
Good evening.
Evening? Okay.
My name is Tom Walsh from Sign Language, Inc., representing Master Kwan for his sign.
Mr. Walsh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Yes.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, and so I understand the variance is for a second wall sign?
Correct.
And?
On the Vassar Road side of the building.
Okay.
As you're driving down Vassar Road, there's no identification that you can see. The other identification is on the door entrance area, and that's visible from, basically, from Route 9. It's just like Davis Furniture was. Davis Furniture had the two locations previously, same colors, pretty much same signs except for the writing.
Yeah. So the rendering that you've submitted would show the Vassar Avenue, or the Vassar Road side?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay. And the one on the other side is actually pretty similar?
It's identical.
Is it actually identical?
Yes.
Okay.
And we kept it, the total area square footage that's allowed, we kept the both signs within that confine.
Added together?
Yeah, 100 square feet total.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, the way that this application is framed is identical to the one that Davis Furniture had submitted in January 2011, and the board had granted with the same condition that a staff report bears this out, that at that particular time, the board granted the second variance, second wall sign variance, on the basis that there would be no free-standing sign. I'm not sure where you would fit one on the site anyway, but that was the stipulation.
Mm-hmm. It'd be difficult, yeah.
Okay. Christine, any questions?
No questions.
Betty?
No questions, except that perhaps the little balloon guy is going to be gone, right? On the roof, he's gone.
That's been taken down.
Okay.
Cute.
I didn't know anything about that, so I heard from you guys.
It was not in the code, yeah.
Not, yeah, right.
You can put him in the window, that's -- that would be okay. Art?
No questions.
Okay, and I've -- Paul?
Nope, no questions.
Oh, what is the county? Oh, yeah. County of...
Oh, okay. Oh, that's -- I shouldn't...
It's their mail.
Okay, I should have asked. Okay. Carmen?
No questions.
Phyllis?
No questions.
Okay. All right, and the board secretary has informed us that the county to whom we have to refer everything has responded that everything on tonight's agenda is a matter of local concern, and so that's not an issue. Okay. Anyone from the audience that wishes to address 766 Vassar Road? Okay, seeing no one, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item 11. Julia and Mark Nelson, 15 Old Mill Drive. Good evening.
Good evening.
State your name, please.
Julia Nelson.
Ms. Nelson, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Please be advised that you are under oath, and any false statements made by you are subject to perjury pursuant to the laws of the State of New York.
Okay, so you want to briefly describe what you're -- what you'd like to do?
We have a 3 1/2-foot wood rail fence that is desperately in need of replacing. We want to replace it with an ornamental aluminum fence that's 4 1/2 feet, which would also be pool code, since we have a pool. And that pool has been there since we bought the house. And since the property's a corner property, town says we can't have beyond 3 1/2. However, pool code is at least four, so...
Okay, all right. Christine?
What, no questions?
Betty?
Another dual yard, front yards, right?
Right. It's sort of a triangular-shaped property.
Right.
Yeah. We were thinking of amending the zoning code so that there are no corners.
Yeah.
I mean, the town would just be one big long loop.
We really heard the market on two front yards, no question. No, I have no other questions, yeah.
All right.
No questions.
The -- you submitted a -- some photo renderings that show an open metal fence.
Yes.
And that's what you're planning to do?
Exactly.
Paul?
No, no question.
Carmen?
And what color?
And, and what color, is it gonna be black?
Yes.
Yes. I appreciate the open fence.
I like the looks of it, too.
No questions.
Okay. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the application at 15 Old Mill Drive? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. That brings us to the, of our agenda.
Okay.
So let us return deliberations to item number one. Rutberg Breslau, personal injury law.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We maybe wanna do the homeowners that are here?
Oh, certainly. Certainly, we concerned, we, there's no reason why we need to wait. Okay, so, let's see. So that brings us to five. Okay. Paul and Hazel Dorn, 152 Bauer Road, a variance to allow an accessory structure, a shed, to be located three feet eight inches from the side lot line where 10 feet is required. It's a type-two action. In your packet, you'll find a staff report recommending that this be approved. Any discussion?
There's a typo in this staff report, you wanna address that first?
Oh.
Number one, it should, the shed, line two, under staff comment, it should be the accessory shed is three feet eight inches from the side yard property line where 10 feet is required, and it says 20.
Oh, okay, okay.
And the same, same, oh, on number three.
That's right, the ordinance says 10 feet, not, okay, so, where it says so many feet is required, strike 20 and make that 10.
Right. On the staff report? Correct.
On the staff report, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. All right, thank, good, good catch. I hadn't, I hadn't seen that. It is correct on the agenda, so, so that's just fine. Straightforward typo here. Okay. Any other comments? Okay, if not, Christine, you wanna do the motion on this one?
Sure. I moved that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number five. This decision is based on a review of the application, the testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report. The approval of this variance is subject to the following conditions. None, okay.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve item number five has been made and seconded, if there's no further discussion.
That's Christine and Art.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay.
Sandy, the notice was correct on that one, right?
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah, it was, it was just in the staff report, and we amended that.
Yeah.
Seven zero, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, item number six, 35 Treetop Lane, this is a variance to allow an accessory structure, a shed, to be located in the front of a principal structure, it's a type-two action. In the staff report, there's findings and a recommendation that this be approved. Discussion?
Well, the guy is lucky enough to have three front yards, so if he sneezes, he's probably gonna need a variance.
That's right. I think you're exactly right.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think I've ever seen a, a property that, technically speaking, was all front yard. You know, when you get down to it, between Cedar Valley, New Hackensack, and Treetop, you know? Okay.
If someone comes to visit, and you say, "Well, come up through the front yard."
Okay. Never mind, okay, we could, yeah, there's, we could go on with this for some.
Yeah.
Okay, Betty, you wanna make the motion?
I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number six. This decision is based on the review of the application, the testimony from the applicant, the testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. And I ask that the board is, adopt as findings items one through five of the staff report.
Second.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded, okay, so a motion to approve item number six has been made and seconded, there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, approved, seven zero. Item seven, 43 Wildwood Drive, this is a variance to allow an existing accessory structure, a shed, located in the front of the principal structure. This, again, is a type-two action, so there's no environmental action that needs to be taken, and in the staff report, you will find a discussion and a suggestion that this be approved. If there's no further discussion, Art, you wanna do this one?
Sure. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number seven. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings determinations found in items one through five of the staff report, and there are no conditions.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve item number seven.
Mm-hmm.
There's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, item seven, approved, seven zero.
Who was it? Me. Who seconded, Betty?
Okay. Item number eight, Raymond Raish, 1 Victor Lane, a variance to allow home addition to be located 15 feet from the front yard line where 30 feet is required, a type-two action. There's a staff report recommending this be approved. Questions, comments?
Oh, this staff report also has a typo.
Um.
Sorry, if you're gonna approve this staff report, don't you want it right?
Okay, um, where-
Number three. It says, in the middle line where it says, "From the front line where 30 feet is required", it should be 30, it says 20. So he actually needs a 15-foot variance.
Okay, all right. Okay, again, the agenda is correct, so it's-
Yeah, the agenda's correct, it's just a typo.
It's simply a typo in the, in the staff report, okay. You're, you're good tonight, Betty.
Oh, yeah.
You're really-
I did nothing do all afternoon.
Got out. Real hawk, that's great. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, with that correction, there's no, let's see, oh, I need to make the motion, yes, okay, here we go. I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number eight. This decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report as corrected.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Approved, seven zero. Item nine has been adjourned. Item 10, Master Kwan, 766 Vassar Road, a variance to allow a second wall sign of 50 square feet where only one wall sign is allowed. This is an unlisted action. Is there an EAF? Okay, and there's an EAF on file, so. I move that for purposes of environmental review of item number 10, that the ZBA declare itself lead agency.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? I move that based on the information submitted in the application and on the environmental, short environmental assessment form, that the zoning board finds that the action proposed in item number 10 will have no significant impact on the environment.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we can turn to the motion on the variance itself. Paul, do you wanna?
Sure, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 10. Decision is based upon a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, results of the site visits by the board members, and the staff report. The board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report, and it's conditioned with that this wall sign is in lieu of any freestanding sign.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve item number 10, subject to one condition. There no further discussion?
Well, I would like to just say that this is the same as, we've granted this variance before for a prior business, and in the area there, I think it's certainly not out of keeping with, with what's going on there.
Yeah. I, I also think it's a very attractive sign.
If you're going south on non, you need it for identification, because, or location, you wouldn't know where the building was till you got past where you have to turn.
Yes, and that's a very difficult corner, yeah.
And I would just clarify that, I mean, the staff recommendation went, just, I would use the full recommendation that in lieu of means that they will not be coming back for a wall sign. You know, in other words, that, it would be null, they won't get, they'll have to take this down if they wanna get a freestanding sign.
Right, right. Okay, so with that understanding, there's no further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, approved, seven zero. Item 11, Julia and Mark Nelson, 15 Old Mill Drive, this is a variance to allow a fence of up to 4.5 feet in height to be located in a front yard where the maximum height is 3.5 feet. This is a type-two action, and in this, there's a staff report, and the conclusion, the recommendation is that the applicant has not established that granting would not result in any detriment, or provided conclusive reasons to support why the area variance should be granted, so if we're gonna move to approve this, we should amend the staff report. Okay.
Staff report doesn't address the four-foot requirement for a fence.
No, it doesn't.
So maybe, I mean, to me, that was, that's what was important to me.
Okay. So.
And further, this is one of those, the conditions of no fences, fences in the front yard are not implicated here, they, they're really behind the corner, there's not gonna be a sight difference, there's not gonna be sight interference, it's part of a safety issue, there had an existing fence there, and this is an open fence, so if the board were to approve this, I would just make sure that it's, complies with the diagram and photos that were submitted with the application.
Right, right. I would, I would only add to this, and, and actually, you, you've already mentioned it, but I would emphasize that in this case, we're talking about a fence that is an open fence. And this specifically addresses the concern in the code, which says that the prohibition on front yard fences is to avoid this kind of closed-off or, or, or kind of walled look, and an open fence such as being proposed clearly does not do that. It preserves the openness of that, of that area. Actually, when, and preserves the openness of existing fence, so, okay. Is, does, does that clarify enough our kind of amendments to the staff report?
Sure.
Okay, all right. So Carmen, you wanna make the, the motion on this?
Sure. Okay. I, I move, I move that the board approve the request for an area variance set forth in item number 11. This is, decision is based on a review of the application, testimony of the applicant, testimony offered in the public hearing, and the results of site visits by board members, and the staff report. In approving this variance, the board adopts as findings the determinations found in items one through five of the staff report.
And those stated in the board's discussion.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Second.
Okay, with that, is, if there's no further discussion, let's see, was, was there a second to that?
Yeah.
Art? Got that, okay. All right, so motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Recusals? Okay, approved, seven zero. All right, now we can go back to the top of the agenda. Okay, item number one.
Mr. Chairman, I believe some, some other people came in after the, are you, are you just here to observe, or did you have an application?
Okay.
Yeah, you're just here to observe, right?
Yeah, fine, okay, good. Okay, item one, 234 North, or, I do this all the time, 3344 Route 9 North.
Is that the right address after all?
Yes, it, it, we, we went around and around on this. It, it turns out that the, the address on the parcel access has been changed, so the-
Just wanna make sure it's right in the rest of the-
Yeah, the legal address is, it actually has a Route 9 address, which is a little unusual, but, okay. A variance to allow a wall sign of 107.62 square feet where a maximum of 50 square feet is allowed. There's, this is an unlisted action. I believe there's an environmental assessment form.
Oh, please, Gus.
Yeah, somewhere in this thick packet. So, I move that the ZBA declare itself lead agency for purposes of environmental review of item number one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, and there's one recusal.
Thank you.
I move that based on the information submitted in the application and in the short environmental assessment form, that the ZBA finds that the action proposed in item number one will have no significant impact on the environment. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, and one recusal. Okay, okay, on to the application itself. You, you have in your packet a, pictures, the staff had reviewed this and, and found that based on its location, there was a minimal impact on the surrounding area, but asked that the applicant provide some alternative renderings, and the applicant has, has done that. And so, in your packet, you, you have three different possible sizes. Now, the, the variance request is for the sign that, that currently exists there as we speak. So, the other, the other thing that I just wanna remind everybody about is that when this was sent to the county, the county responded recommending that we deny this. As a result, if we were to approve this, it has to be approved by a supermajority, which means that there has to be a majority plus one, okay? So a majority of the board would be four, plus one would make five. So there would have to be five yes votes for this to be adopted. Okay, we have one recusal, and we're down two members, so there are only six voting members, so that would mean that two no votes would, would effectively deny this. Okay, at this point, I think we can do, we can do one of two things. We can proceed, understanding what the, what the rules are, or we can put off the vote until the next meeting. We've closed the public hearings, so we have 62 days in which to make a decision. So we could, we can, we can wait until we have, hopefully in January, a full seven voting members. Now, the question is, is it, is it fair to the applicant to, to essentially force a vote where you're, you really are, are short one person? And that's, that's what I, I think we have to decide now.
Jim?
Yes.
Did we get cleared up whether or not the county, 'cause meant what they said, wasn't Mr. Rutberg gonna get us another letter, and did we get that letter?
Yes, we did, and I, I think I can fairly paraphrase it to say that they're, they're not adding anything further.
So are they still opposed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, which, which is, which is why we still need this supermajority.
Okay, sorry.
And we're still talking about an existing sign?
Yes.
There.
Yes. Okay.
And the other signs on that building don't have any?
They're not.
My understanding, and I've, I've checked on this, is that there are no variances for those signs. Now, whether or not those signs are in violation of the zoning code technically, that's a question for the zoning administrator to decide. I think we can all look at them and have some ideas, but that's a determination that we cannot make. we cannot make.
Does our possibly granting the variance impact what may or may not occur on the other signs?
Technically, no. Each variance is, has to be judged on its own merits.
Right. But you do, you need, I mean, it potentially sets a precedent. You need to specify, you know, it's just more important to specify why, if you're granting or denying this particular variance, your reasoning for doing so.
Right. Right. Okay.
I'm starting to feel an adjournment coming on.
I, I, I want to move this along. On the other hand, I had hoped that we'd have a full panel tonight. I do feel a little reluctant to, to move forward without a full board. I mean, I think this is one where among us, we have some honest differences, and, and I, and I think it's important to discuss those. And as a result, I think I would like to have the full, the benefit of the full panel.
I would like to see an adjournment because the sign is, is existing, and it's not like he's trying to open his business and get a sign up. So I, I don't feel the urgency there, or assume that he doesn't either.
Since he's not in here.
Yeah, in the sense of, you know, what's, what's the harm of waiting until January?
Yeah.
And did he know that it was going to be up again tonight? Because did he send a letter and said he could?
Should, should, should have known.
Okay.
But he didn't send us any correspondence indicating.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, I, I am happy that we at least closed the public hearing, we're moving this along. I think if we, if we want to wait until next month to do the vote, that's fine. Okay.
I would prefer that.
So you move that we adjourn the, the decision on item number one till January?
January 12th, I believe it was, 2015.
Yeah.
Okay. And I, I would like to have the vote taken in January.
Okay.
On item number one.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So the motion is to adjourn the decision until January 12th. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay. And one recusal, so.
One recusal and one nay, too?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Okay. Then, item number two, 51 Fairview Corporation, 5153 Fairview Avenue. This is an application for a use variance to allow a restaurant in a residential area. I can't remember when this first came on to the agenda, but it was some months ago.
June 7th was.
June was, yes, oh, that was.
It was back in June?
May 14 is, the letter from the architect is dated.
Okay. And we have, we've adjourned it a couple of times, and, and sometimes simply because there was no response. I think we've been more than patient. So I think at this point, I would, my preference would be to dismiss this without prejudice. If they want to come back, that's fine. I think when they were here and made the initial presentation, we were pretty clear about the kinds of information and documentation that would be required. And I think if they, I think if they come back with another application, they certainly will know what it is that they need to do. So I move that item number two be dismissed without prejudice.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Recusals? Okay. So item two is dismissed.
Okay.
And items three and four have been adjourned to January. That brings us to the end of the agenda.
Okay.
And unless there's any new business before the board, I hope everyone will enjoy the holidays, get rested up.
January.
And ready to go on January 12th.
Okay.
And there's something we all in the corner.
So is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.